Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Did everyone else hear him?
Yes.
Yeah. I hope so, it'll be, otherwise it'll be quite an interesting presentation.
That would be fun. Um, all right, so I'm just gonna make some brief remarks, Robert, and we have SBLY from the IT Council that's gonna share a little bit about himself and his company, and then Laura Edgcombe from the board is going to introduce you, Robert, so I'm just hanging out for a few minutes.
No rush.
Um, so, hi, everyone, thanks so much for joining us this morning. My name is Gracie Simoninger, and I'm the president of Downtown Council. For those of you that are new, I see some new faces on the call. Just to give you a brief overview of who we are and how we're connected with the Chamber, we are one of 10 Chamber councils, and simply put, Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. The Downtown Council represents Jacksonville's downtown business community, including major corporations, growing businesses, and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing you top-tier speakers to our meetings, and today is clearly no different with Robert joining us. In usual circumstances, we meet in person on the first and third Friday of every month at the old St. Andrew's Church in downtown Jacksonville, and breakfast is provided by local bread and board and coffee from our local Martin Coffee. But as everyone is dealing with the current disruptions, we have been conducting our meetings via Zoom since March, and we'll reevaluate our plan at a future time. So our next meeting actually is canceled because of Labor Day weekend, but our next, well, we have a couple of evening ones that I'll share with you towards the end of the program, and then our next one, next morning session will be the third Friday in September, so keep a lookout for that. In addition, our annual signature event is painting of the paw prints. For those of you that have ever driven down Bay Street in downtown Jacksonville, you'll notice there are large paw prints along the road. That is basically, the council started that when the Jaguars first came into town, and it is our honor and excitement to repaint those paw prints every single year. Obviously, this year looks a little bit different, since it's normally a large community event, but we look forward to sharing more details with you in the coming weeks. I do wanna take a moment, we have a lot of Downtown Council board members on the call, so if you are a board member, will you just wave and say hello to everyone that's joined us this morning?
Everybody.
That's great.
Morning.
Awesome.
Good morning.
Good to see you. There's also a couple of other people I'd like to recognize, I'm not sure if Dr. Kristi Mailer is on the call. She is our immediate past president, and she is also serving as the all-council chair for the Jax Chamber, so we're excited to have her in that leadership role. And then, in addition, Ben Johnson of Martin Coffee is our downtown small business leader of the year. He was also awarded overall SBLY of the year this year, Small Business Leader of the Year through the Chamber. He was unable to join us this morning, but I also wanted to recognize him for all of his accomplishments, very excited to have him. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to membership chair Brian Tuttle to welcome some of our new members from the past couple months, and also share more about our spotlight speaker for this meeting. Brian?
Hey, good morning, everybody, and thank you very much, everybody that's joined us. We continue the good tradition of Downtown Council, because I have a lot of names to mention, and I didn't have a chance to go through and see how many of these people are actually on the call today. But I'm just gonna say their names, because I think that, as again, even though it's 2020, we continue to have great people, great meetings, great speakers, and the people that join, again, these calls, and the people that I'm gonna mention here are what make the council so great. So, again, if you're here, wave to the camera. Mr. Brian Allen, Damian Williams, Gerald Thomas, Jason Pratt, Kevin Cook, Mono Edwards, Richard Todd, Shonda Group, which I hope you got the information, there he is, I see you. Marissa Marchesilo, forgive me if I said it incorrectly, Stephanie Patton, Virginia Houston, and Moti Mariwala. Anybody that I just called out, wave, it's Ashon. All right, well, in any case, you are, hey, Stephanie, you, again, are the people that make the council so great, and as we continue to work through this time, I just thank you for being a participant. As Gracie mentioned, I'd like to introduce our spotlight speaker. Pull something up. And he is the Small Business Leader of the Year for the IT Council, so I've heard him speak, or I met him briefly at an IT Council meeting, and I'm not gonna say a lot about what he's done or what he's doing, I'll let him do that, but Aaron Enos began, he's an entrepreneur, he started a company called Sensible Recycling back in just 2016. He's always had an affinity for electronics, and he's, in his words, "one of those kids that liked to take things apart and put them back together." That led him to serve in the Navy, so I think I speak on behalf of everyone, thank you for his service. But he realized that e-waste was handled in ways that are similar to scrap metal, and he knew there was a better way, so he created Sensible Recycling, and as I said, I don't wanna steal any of his thunder, I'll let him do that, Aaron Enos.
Thank you. Everybody can hear me, right?
Yeah, you sound great.
Good. Um, yeah, just to tell you a little bit about myself, I guess, being an entrepreneur and being able to start my own business is kind of a culmination of everything that I've kind of learned in life, all the skills that I've acquired and knowledge that I've attained. It gives me the ability to kind of mesh everything together and build something, and I guess the fun thing is about doing your own business and building something and being successful at it, is it doesn't necessarily have to follow a set path or a specific model, and that's what's kind of sets us apart from other recycling companies out there, was that the model is different. We do everything for free, and I think a lot of people have a hard time wrapping their head around that, like, how do you make money if you're doing everything for free? And I've had people tell me, unless I charge money, my company's not legitimate, I can't legitimize myself being a free service, but, and as they say, you know, nothing in life is free, but the way that we make our money is through the recycling process, so when I say that things are similar to metal recycling, circuit boards contain metals, and they derive their value from the metal recovery, so, you know, we dismantle things, take them apart, do a processing on them, and send downstream, and get paid for the metal recovery value. So, that also allows us to kind of police ourselves and make sure that we're doing things in the right way to comply with environmental standards, because in order to make money, you have to prepare that material for the next process, and like I said, it self-governs what we do. The other thing that kind of sets us apart is data security, so we really focus on data security by physically destroying data-related materials such as hard drive, data tape, you know, blockies, DVDs, we shred it. So, we can come to you and shred, we're compliant with HIPAA and various other governing bodies, GLBA, et cetera, et cetera, provide certificates of destruction and whatnot, so I guess that kind of the fun part about business is realizing that everybody is incentivized to make decisions, and I kind of picked that up in economics, studying economics in college and whatnot, so, you know, people make rational decisions based on incentives. So, designing the business, I ask myself, why do people hold on to electronics? And generally, that's, it's based on data security, or not knowing what to do with the material once it's reached the end of life, so we try and do that by making sure 100% of that data is destroyed, and making sure that we provide a service that's easy and free for people to take advantage of, and do the right thing for the environment, the community, and our customers, and it's been successful to that point, and it's been fun. And I think the hardest part that I've run into to this point is managing the growth, and making sure that we don't grow too fast and things get out of control, and I find myself at a desk most of the time now, trying to support the business itself, and trying constantly to pull myself away to work on the business and not in the business, but it's difficult, and, but that's the challenge, and the challenge is something I love, and I think the other entrepreneurs out there do it for that reason, too, it's the challenge, it's the feeling of being successful and succeeding, and being out there in the community, and being involved with other people, and getting to know everyone, and it feels good. And I feel like I've built something here with my employees, and they're an extended family for me, and it feels good to be able to do what's right for them, and at the end of the day, I go home feeling fulfilled, and I love it, and I appreciate being here and talking to you guys about what I do and why I do it, and it's an awesome opportunity, so I appreciate it, and I know that, I think I ran over by a minute according to the schedule here, so I'll wrap it up, but I appreciate the opportunity, guys, and if you ever have any questions or any needs for our service, feel free to give me a call, thank you.
I'll go ahead and, thank you so much, Aaron, do you mind putting your contact information in the chat box for everybody? Great, thanks. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Laura Edgcombe to introduce our speaker, our second speaker for today. Laura?
Good morning, everybody. So, as, you know, as we've been going through these couple of weeks and COVID times, and there's a lot going on in Jacksonville, and when we sit down as a group, trying to determine kind of who we think should come speak, Jacksport's come on our list a couple times, so, you know, we just had to find like the right moment, and in a way, as a true Jack civilian, you know, there's so many, so many things about Jacksport that are like, wait, what do they do? Oh, they do that, I didn't realize that they were very much involved, not only in just the cargo side, but clearly the cruise side as well, and then we keep hearing Jacksport on the news for a million other reasons, and so we reached out to see if we could get someone to kind of come talk to us about Jacksport, and we were very fortunate that we have Mr. Robert Peake, who is the director and general manager of sales and marketing, and he's gonna talk to us today about the Jacksport deepening and its impact on the Jacksonville economy. Robert's been very gracious to, we kind of sent him a whole bunch of topics that we thought would be relevant, and he has agreed to talk to all of them, so thank you, Robert. Just to give everyone, like, two seconds of background, Robert's been with Jacksport since 1995, he was part of their external affairs, he was their director of communications before going into the marketing role, and now as director of general management. So, Robert, thank you so much for joining us today, and I'm gonna turn it over to you. You guys, if you haven't been on a call before, if you have questions, put them in the chat box, we will be moderating, and then Robert, I'll ask you then at the end of the, at the end of your presentation.
Well, thank you so much, Laura, I appreciate that, I appreciate you and Bruce both steering me into some topics that might be of interest. There's a tremendous amount going on at the port, I know that harbor deepening is kind of top of mind, and if I have some slides, I know that if we can call those up, we'll kind of jump into those, and what I'll do is I'll shoot through those slides and then be able to take any questions. Test slide, so, yep, we see the test slide, if you go to the next slide for me, please, and we'll go one more slide in, if you could advance it for me, and then do one more slide in, there we go. And I apologize that some of the fonts are kind of messed up, but I think, I think there'll be sufficient, we can kind of go through it. The very first topic I'm gonna talk about is harbor deepening, because that's kind of top of mind for so many people, and just to reset for everyone, so, right now, Jacksonville is undergoing a deepening project to deepen the main shipping channel, the St. John's River, from a depth of 40 feet, where it is now, to a depth of 47 feet, and that project is critical to allow us to accommodate the newer and larger container ships that are plying the world's oceans, to let us not only grow the port's business, but frankly, to retain a lot of the business that we've grown over the last 10 years. The actual deepening started back in early 2018, and we're a little over halfway done, or the project is a little over halfway completed, and it was originally scheduled to be completed in 2025, but the Corps of Engineers is actually two years ahead of schedule, so the project is on pace to be completed in 2023, and the project has been broken up into four segments, and you can see them in different colors there on your screen, in the contract segments, A, B, C, and D, and our focus really has been on making sure that we can get contracts A, B, and C completed, because that would take us through the Blount Island Marine Terminal to ensure that that terminal has deep water, and Contract A has been completed, you see in that dark yellow near Mayport, Contract B, which is the light blue, that's underway now, that should be done probably sometime next year, and then Contract C, the deep red there by Blount Island, that contract is about to be awarded by the US Army Corps of Engineers, and when that Contract C is actually completed, that will be the last three miles of the core harbor deepening project, and that should be completed by 2023. And the significant development of this project really has been the last few weeks, when Jacksonville City Council agreed to fund a city portion of the harbor deepening project, and what the city did really was, was take three steps toward funding. One is that the city agreed to loan the Port Authority $40 million that we could use to pay the Corps towards harbor deepening, is really a bridge loan. The Corps of Engineers, the state of Florida will actually pay that $40 million as a reimbursement after the work is done, but the Corps needs the money upfront, and so the Port Authority is asked to borrow that $40 million from the city to pay the Corps, and when the project is done, the state of Florida will reimburse the Port Authority and will pay off that loan, so the Port Authority will pay off that loan in full within two years to include interest and any taxes, so we'll make the city whole on that $40 million loan. It's really just a bridge until we can get the state money. Separately, the city also agreed to fund a $35 million grant for Jacksport this year in its current fiscal year budget towards harbor deepening, and the city also agreed to fund up to $35 million in its next fiscal year budget, so that's $70 million total, plus the $40 million bridge loan, and with those actions, harbor deepening is fully funded through Contract C, so fully authorized, fully funded, over halfway complete, so we're really thrilled with that. The economic impact studies that have been done for this project show that it will protect or grow about 15,000 jobs in northeast Florida, not only at the port directly, but through the supply chain in our area, so warehousing, distribution companies, distribution centers that will open, and back office work, too, for ocean carriers, freight forwards, customs brokers, it's really got this tremendous economic impact that will resonate for many, many years, so, in my mind, this is about the single most important container project in the last 30 years at Jacksport, and with the, with the city's leadership, and it's unanimous city council vote a few weeks ago, we now have a full funding for this project, and excited to see it completed in 2023. So, if you'll advance the next slide for me, please, I'll be glad to answer your questions about that, but I do wanna talk about some other, some other elements going out the port. So, we get a lot of questions about COVID, and how COVID and coronavirus is impacting the port, so, the way that I look at it is, our operations are really, I break it into three different areas, we kind of have our corporate or administrative work that we're doing, we have our cargo operations, and then we have our cruise operations. So, from a corporate standpoint, like a lot of companies, we've started working from home a few months ago, and we've been working from home for a number of months, but we've really transitioned to an at-work environment from the administrative side, really seamlessly, without any problems, so all of our finance and accounting, resources, information technology, and my entire marketing, sales team, all working from home, and we really haven't missed a beat. On, and then in our administrative offices, they're closed to visitors right now, if we do come in the building, we have to have a touchless temperature check, we have to wear a mask at all times when we're away from our desks, we do physical distancing, we're not really allowing visitors in the building right now, so we're doing a lot of the normal protocols, if you will, that a lot of companies are doing administratively, but it's working out fine for us. Now, on the cargo side, we have had an impact on the cargo side, as really every port in the United States has, if you'll advance the slide one time for me, please. In fact, if you hit it a couple of times for me there, there you go. So, this, these numbers that you're seeing here, these are what I call the pre-COVID numbers, so these were Jacksport's rankings as they appeared last year at the end of 2019, so we measure our containers by what we call a 20-foot-sized container, which is a TEU, a 20-foot equivalent unit, and it's kind of a standard unit of measurement in the industry, so last year, we handled 1.3 million containers, and you can see the other Florida ports and how many containers that they handled, so we're the, we're the largest port in Florida for container handling, and we're the 10th largest port in the United States for container handling. Both Charleston and Savannah, they are big competitors of ours, they handle more containers than we do, but all three of those ports have grown over the last 10 years significantly, so we do compete for those, against those ports for business, but we really held our own quite well in terms of our container growth. If you hit the slide for me one more time, and I think, yeah, so, we also are the nation's second busiest vehicle handling port, we handle almost 700,000 vehicles last year, port of Baltimore was number one. So, what COVID has done is because people are not shopping as much in stores, they're not going to restaurants, they're not staying at resorts, well, a lot of the goods that we ship through the port are goods that go in those containers that end up at these restaurants and resorts and malls and whatnot, so volumes have dropped off about 8% this year for us, they've dropped off at every container port pretty much in the United States, anywhere from 5 to 20%, depending upon which port you look at. Automobile volumes have dropped off double digits at every major auto port, so when the rankings come out at the end of 20, at the beginning of 2021, I think we still will retain these same rankings, because everyone's gonna see a decline in volumes in 2020, but our relative rankings will likely stay the same. If you go one slide in for me, please, just go to the next slide, one more for me, please. All right, and again, I'm sorry the text is kind of jammed up, but, so our administrative work continues, our terminals have remained open, our cargo terminals have remained open, ships are still coming in and out, trucks are still coming in and out, none of that has stopped, it's just that the volumes have declined somewhat, and they will recover, and that recovery will be tied at Jacksport and at many ports nationally to the economic recovery, so as states reopen, as economies reopen safely, as people begin to go back into the economy, you'll start, we'll start seeing those volumes begin to recover, and Jacksonville sets up very well for that recovery, and if you'll go to the next slide for me, because a lot of the, a lot of the fundamentals that grew our business to begin with remain in place now, and will for the future, and that is that we're really blessed with this tremendous strategic geographic location in the southeastern corner of the United States, so if anyone imports into the United States, they can reach a consumer, 70 million consumers within a one-day truck drive, they can reach 2/3 of the US population within two days. Any manufacturers in the United States in those shaded areas can reach us within one or two days for our US manufactured goods for export, and we're also blessed to have our port in the third most populous state in the United States, about 22 million people live here, and we're at the intersection of Interstate 95 and 10, with Interstate 75 just west of us, with three railroads servicing us, Norfolk Southern, Florida East Coast Railway, and CSX, and so if you almost look at this as a GIS map, you have this tremendous population base, huge consumer base, at the intersection of these major interstate highways and rail network, and those are some of the fundamentals that really play into that, once we have our harbor deepening project, all that is serviced by this major deep-water port with modern container terminals, it really sets us up well for long-term for growth as a, as a major, major port in the US. If you go to the next slide for me, please. Um, and if you click one more time for me, please. So what this is, it's a map, and each of those white dots shows where there are ships that are sailing directly between those ports, imports in Jacksonville, in Jacksport, and what we try to do is really become a true global port and have service all over the world. If you, and, you know, Bruce and I had been in email contact as we were getting ready for this presentation, and he had asked about a couple of trends that were going on in international shipping that really do play in Jacksonville's favor, and one of those trends is that historically, if you go back a couple of decades or more, the way a lot of goods came into the Southeast United States is they did not necessarily come in through a port like Jacksonville, or for that matter, necessarily a port in the southeast at all, those, those goods were coming in through ports in California or on the West Coast, and then they would be put on trucks and trains and brought all the way across the country to the Southeast United States. And so, a number of years ago, shippers began to think, you know, it probably makes a lot more logistics sense, and could be a lot cheaper to actually bring those goods in directly to a southeastern port like Jacksonville. If you hit the slide for me one time. And so that thinking was already going on a number of years ago, and then 2016, the Panama Canal expanded its locks, and it, and by doing so, it began to allow, physically allow, much larger container ships to come through the Panama Canal, and so instead of those ships all having to go to the West Coast of the United States and having those goods go to ports there, and then be railed or trucked across the country, many of those ships could now travel through the Panama Canal straight into ports like Jacksport, and we can pick up that business directly. So, this, this trend of shifting cargo from the West Coast to the East Coast in the South Atlantic has been going on for a while, and the expansion of the Panama Canal locks helped to kind of accelerate that some. If you hit the slide for me one more time for me, please. So another trend is where that X is, that's China, and China has really been called the world's factory, and there's a reason for that, so there are about 200 countries in the world, give or take. China alone accounts for about 1/3 of all international container shipping in the world, so they are a massive, massive player in the world. Well, even before COVID, there were a lot of companies over the last few years that had started to have some concerns about being so heavily leveraged in one country, wasn't necessarily just because it was China, it's just that so much production and manufacturing and distribution was all coming out of one country, it was kind of having all your eggs in one basket, so companies began to start thinking that they needed to start shifting some of their production and manufacturing to other countries to diversify a little bit so they didn't have everything in one place, well, sure enough, COVID hit, and, and a lot of production shut down in China, as China initially shut down its production to send people home from the factories, and that dried up a lot of raw materials and finished goods that companies needed, and they realized, you know, we really are heavily leveraged in China, and so that has accelerated something that's been going on for a while, and that is for companies to find other places to manufacture their goods, and if you hit the slide for me just one, one time, there we go. So you see that little arrow popped up, and one of the trends has been for a lot of that manufacturing to shift to other countries in Asia, particularly the Southeast Asia, so Vietnam, for example, has picked up a lot of production, other companies are trying to shift the places, production to places like Malaysia and Singapore, and even Indonesia and India, and as that production has shifted to the Southeast of Asia, and even, even further west, it's created another trend, if you hit the slide for me one time there. What it's allowed is, for some shippers, is that production has shifted to Southeast Asia and west, it has made the Suez Canal a more attractive option for shipping their goods across the Atlantic via the Suez Canal straight into the East Coast of the United States versus going the other way across the Pacific through the Panama Canal, so both of those trends in terms of the new, the new canal locks opening and a shift in manufacturing to Southeast Asia kind of bode well for us, because it's driving cargo to the East Coast in the Southeast United States, and with harbor deepening, we can take full advantage of those trends. Now, having said that, there are a lot of, there's some energy now to see some of this manufacturing return all the way to the United States or to, to the US system, places anywhere from Puerto Rico to any of the other US territories or the states, and Jacksonville, again, we stand very well to benefit from that from a shipping standpoint, because a lot of those companies are likely to produce not just for domestic production, but also if they produce for export, then Jacksonville stands very well to pick up those export cargoes as well, but China and Asia are very, very But, um, China, uh, and Asia are very, very, um, the, the, the amount of production there really cannot be, um, overstated. Uh, just to give you an example of, of the, the top 10 container ports in the world, uh, those, those ports that handle the most containerized cargo, um, seven are in China. Uh, the other 197 company, countries share the other three. And, um, of the other three, one is Busan, South Korea, and one is Singapore. So nine of the 10 top container ports in the world are in China. The number 10th port is Rotterdam. Um, if you took the number one port in the world, which is Shanghai, and you cut their volumes in half, which is, which is unheard of, but just as a philosophical exercise. If you cut their volumes in half, they would still be the world's fifth largest port. So the, the amount of business that actually goes to and from China, the amount of production in China and in Asia as in its, uh, as a, as a geographic region is massive. And so you could indeed see, I think we will, we will start, we will continue to see manufacturing shift out of China to other places in Southeast Asia, and the potential to have it shift to places like the United States. It's a question of timing and of scale, and those two things are still to be decided. But either way, Jack's, Jack's port and Jacksonville, I think, sets up very well for, for any of that. So you hit the slide for me again, please. And, um, that was just a few notes. If you go to the next slide for me, please. Okay, so, uh, I'm just gonna finish on two notes, and then I'll be glad to take any question. One is on cruise service. So I mentioned that corporately, we really were not affected by coronavirus other than working from home, and that was seamless in my mind. Cargo, our volumes have taken a hit, our revenue's taken a hit. Um, but, um, we, we'll, we will, we'll recover from that. Uh, but, but, uh, but there was a, there was an impact. Cruise, cruise has gone away for now. So, uh, unlike cargo where all the cargo, you know, cargo ships were still coming and going, cruise shut down in April. So, uh, Jacksonville has one, one cruise line, that's Carnival Cruise Lines. And they do, uh, use this ship, Carnival ecstasy, is homeported in Jacksonville, and we have, uh, four and five-night overnight cruises aboard this ship to the Bahamas. And that ship always sold full, uh, people gave it very high marks. Um, everything was kind of rocking and rolling, and then COVID hit. And in April, the Center for Disease Control, uh, basically issued what they call a no-sail order for cruise lines. They told cruise lines just to shut down and stop sailing. And they've since extended that order all the way through the end of September. And then Carnival, uh, belongs to a, a coalition of, uh, US, major US cruise lines, and that whole coalition of cruise lines has voluntarily extended that shutdown through October 31st. So there, there are no cruise ships, uh, large cruise ships sailing in the, uh, in the US and will not until any earlier than November 1. And so, um, this ship could return as early as November 1. Carnival's not, uh, yet, um, uh, really, uh, said exactly what the protocols will be for the vessel, but I'm sure that they're, they're doing something system-wide and will make that widely known. So we've seen the cruise business go away for now, um, but we believe that will return, uh, with this vessel, uh, hopefully in November. And, um, and, and we're eager to see the, the cruise business, um, return. You, you go to one more slide for me, please. Okay, and I'll end on this note, and that's, uh, liquefied natural gas LNG. So a lot of companies and communities, they, they, uh, talk about being a world leader in something, and, and sometimes they are, and sometimes it's just kind of, um, it's kind of hyperbole. But the truth is that Jacksonville truly has become a world leader in the use of liquefied natural gas for the maritime industry. Um, the, uh, the ship you see up in the top left, Tote Maritime, uh, many of you might know this, uh, they are based in Jacksonville. Uh, they, uh, built the world's first two container ships powered by liquefied natural gas. And shortly after that, Crowley Maritime, you see in the bottom left there, uh, they built the world's first two ships that carry a combination of cars and containers that are powered by liquefied natural gas. So all four of these ships, uh, were built by Jacksonville-based companies in the United States. All four of those ships are homeported in Jacksonville. And if you hit the slide one more time for me. Um, again, in this ship, uh, this ship just came to visit Jacksonville a few weeks ago. This, uh, ship is owned by a company based in the Cayman Islands. This ship is the world's first large automobile-carrying ship that's powered by liquefied natural gas. And it came to, uh, Jackson on one of its first, uh, ship calls. It was carrying automobiles made in Mexico, uh, to Jacksonville. The ship can carry seven and a half thousand cars. And, um, this ship will make regular visits out, as will its sister ship. And other ships in the world are, are, uh, being converted or being designed and built to burn liquefied natural gas, which is a much cleaner burning fuel than, um, than bunker C and diesel and some of these other, uh, traditional fuel sources, uh, that ships use. And before COVID, we literally were hosting people from all over the world to come see, uh, these vessels and the liquefaction processes and the fueling capabilities, um, of, for these vessels. Uh, we were hosting people from Eastern Europe, Western Europe, Asia, South America, the Caribbean, um, to, to get best practices to do this themselves. Uh, then COVID hit and all that's kind of, um, the, the visits have dried up. But the, the interest has not. And, um, and Jacksonville really has gotten up in, in front of this. And between Tote and Crowley and the two big LNG companies that have established facilities in town, Jack's LNG and Eagle LNG, um, they have invested over a billion dollars in LNG infrastructure in Northeast Florida. So this will continue to be beneficial for the port and for the city of Jacksonville in Northeast Florida, and, and we're very excited about the advent of LNG. Okay, so just in the interest of time, I'm gonna go ahead and just ask you to advance the next slide for me, please, and, and I'll wrap up. Um, and be glad to answer any questions about any of that or anything I didn't cover.
Thanks, Robert. That's a really pretty picture. That should be someone's backdrop. That could be your backdrop, presumably.
Yeah, I, 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 I should have put in my backdrop. So I've got, I see some questions that have popped up in the chat.
Yeah, and I've got some others that have been sent that I'm gonna kind of moderate and kind of ask. And, you know, and anything that we don't get to, we'll send you, and, um, um, it, it tends to be sometimes after these meetings, people have questions, and they're like, oh, can you please ask? So if I send you some questions, that's why.
Right.
Um, kind of going, uh, wanna try to ask these in a couple of ways. Some of them are, you know, grouped together and somewhat relevant. One of them being, uh, just to what you just spoke about, which would be, uh, the cruise lines. Um, one of the questions is, um, you know, do you think that once cruises are allowed back, once people are sailing again, that, that we would be going and searching for a cruise line other than Carnival, adding one that's larger, NCL Viking, one of those types of, um, conglomerates?
Yes, that's a great question. So, um, Jacksonville actually sets up very well as a cruise market because just on, just as I mentioned on the cargo side, we're a day's drive to 70 million people. Well, uh, that helps us on the cruise side. So, um, there's a, there's some speculation in the cruise industry right now that when cruising returns, people are going to want to cruise a little closer to home. Instead of getting on an airplane and drive and flying someplace, they just want to be able to drive to their cruise port. Well, Jacksonville sets extremely well for that because we have all these people here. And, uh, there's speculation that people might want a little shorter cruise. They, they might not want a 14-day cruise. They might want a four or five-night cruise, and that's exactly what we offer here. So, um, we have long been interested in seeing additional cruise lines come to Jacksonville. The, the limiting factor for us candidly has been the location of our, of our cruise terminal, which is on the west side of the Dames Point Bridge. And, um, the modern cruise lines, uh, and modern cruise ships are significantly taller than the Dames Point Bridge, uh, by dozens of feet. And so we're really limited into what cruise ships can come to Jacksonville with the cruise terminal where it was. And for those of you who've been around a while, you'll know that that cruise terminal was built as a temporary facility just to get us in the business. We really never intended for it to be the permanent facility. Uh, we just had, uh, we had property there and we paved it, and we said, let's just put up a, a little building and, and see what happens. Well, that was, uh, 2004, and we're still using that building. And, and in fact, Carnival's, um, passengers every now and again rate it the best, uh, cruise terminal in their, in their, in Carnival's fleet. But, um, we really don't have a piece of property and have not been able to identify one on the east side of the bridge to eliminate the, the bridge height issue. And so we've had to stay where we're at. So, yes, we'd love to see additional cruise lines come. Uh, we think we set up very well demographically for it. It, we've have a limiting factor in terms of this, the, uh, the bridge height. Um, but I, 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 I'm still bullish. I think that Carnival will come back, and I think that long-term, there, that we, we indeed could see additional, additional vessel or so come to Jacksonville.
Okay. Um, let's see. So, this one, um, clearly we are, we've been witnessing, um, some government policy changes that are directly affiliated with China. Um, and we're, some, some of us are curious, um, you know, do, has that impacted anything as far as the port industry goes? Um, and if so, like, oh, cause it's not like it just has been happening in the last couple of years. I mean, it's been in the last decade or so. How does that impact y'all? Is it like an immediate effect? Is it just kind of trickle over and then go away? Just how does that work for y'all?
Yeah, so, um, I think the two things that have, have been impactful, one is that, uh, the, the US government and China have been kind of in this trade war, if you will, the last couple of years. And that has depressed, uh, import and export volumes for container trade for China in the US. Um, but the volume of international container, um, goods to and from Asia as a whole has just been growing. And, um, as ma- as manufacturing has shifted, uh, out of China to places I mentioned like Vietnam, we've seen a, a great uptick in business in these other countries as well. Um, so the overall, uh, business has grown. Last year, we set a record. We handled more containers and more cars than we ever did in the history of the port. Um, and then COVID hit, and, you know, COVID was kind of this big wet blanket that was thrown over, um, you know, the, uh, the, the, the international port industry. But all trends point to a rebound. Um, the question is when. Uh, some economists, the most optimistic ones, think it'll be this calendar year. Uh, or some, some economists think it'll be this calendar year, but most economists think it'll be next year sometime when we'll see a rebound. And that rebound will be tied to, um, our port volume rebounds will be tied largely to how the economies rebound. Um, so we're very diversified in our port. We, we trade with 100 countries all over the world. China is a big trading partner, but we're so diversified. Um, uh, half of our business is in the Caribbean, um, a percentage is in South America, um, that, uh, we've, we've been able to withstand kind of shocks to the system in the past. Um, we did through 9/11. We did through the Great Recession of 2008, 2009. After both of those shocks, we came back and set port records for volumes. I think that's what's gonna happen here. I think it's a question of timing. But eventually, I believe that we will rebound to pre-COVID levels and then set new records. And, and I think that'll be true frankly for a lot of ports in the US.
Well, that's reassuring. You know, it's, cause I mean, the industry is, it's kind of like a quiet giant, and I don't think that, you know, many, many people realize truly of y'all, how y'all are being impacted definitely, and is a, a true testament of what's going on in the rest of the community. Um, question of the hour, let's, we're gonna go ahead and hit this one, would be, um, you know, uh, clearly we're, we love Jack's port, everyone does, and it's, it's a huge, um, influx for our economy and for the city as a whole, but the environmental impacts of deepening, um, you know, it's, it was stated and, um, you know, Riverkeeper Lisa stated that, uh, the Army Corps was finding that the project's gonna increase the water levels up to eight, almost eight and a half inches in some of the areas if we have a big storm. What's high tide, low tide gonna look like? Like, overall, what will it do to the envi- I mean, a big part of Jacksonville is our environment, and it's what makes us so beautiful. So how is this gonna impact that positively?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a good, it's a, it's a very good question. So, before Harvard evening could begin, um, the US Army Corps of Engineers conducted a series of studies, including an environmental impact study. And the, and the Corps of Engineers, uh, has regulatory authority to, to tell us, listen, this is what the impact's gonna be, and you have to mitigate for it. So the, um, the Corps did require some mitigation on our behalf, with which the Port Authority has done. And our CEO, Eric Green, has, is publicly committed, and committed to City Council to continue to work with them on identifying what other mitigation efforts, um, uh, can be done or could be done. So, you know, it's something that we take very seriously. Um, you know, we, we recognize that, um, it, there's a, it's a tremendous economic opportunity for the community, but we want to do that in tandem in terms of being, being wise environmentally as well. And, um, that's something that our CEO has said, uh, a number of times publicly. Um, we, we lean heavily on the US Army Corps of Engineers and on their studies. Uh, they have environmental scientists that do those studies. They're peer-reviewed. Uh, they tell us what, you know, what steps to take, what mitigation to take, and, and, and we follow their lead. At the end of the day, the Corps is responsible for, you know, for that project. They let the, they do the studies, they let the contracts, they choose the vendors. Um, but we want to be a partner in that. Um, we want to be a continued partner with, uh, with the city in terms of, of, um, of, of being good stewards of the river ourselves.
So to that, is it, is it an ongoing process? I mean, we all are experiencing, you know, we collectively are experiencing environmental changes that we didn't think would happen. We're about to have our 13th, 14th tropical storm. It's one of those things where it's like, oh, okay, it's, it's August, and here we are. I mean, so is this an ongoing, um, as the environment itself, as science happens, as the environment changes? Is that something that, you know what I mean? Like, it's not like, oh, we did a study five years ago, don't worry, we're gonna be okay. Cause in the last five, we flooded three times, you know?
Yeah, so I know that, I know that we've committed to, um, uh, and I, I don't want to speak out of turn and say this wrong, but I believe the port's committed to, um, monitoring for about 10 years moving forward.
Okay.
Um, and, and working with stakeholders, um, along the river, working with City Council, working with, um, the environmental community. Um, but yes, no, you're right. It's not about just looking backwards. It's about looking forwards in terms of impacts and, um, and, and how can we apart, how can we be a partner in that?
Um, someone asked, uh, Bruce asked in regards to the cruise line, is there not any space on Pine Island? And if, and if so, would NPS restrict it?
Yeah, so, um, you know, we looked at Pine Island about, uh, 20 years ago, maybe, something like that. Um, doesn't really set up very well. Um, uh, the, the, the configuration of the property there does set up very well. The road infrastructure in my mind does set up well. You got, you know, that two-lane Hector Drive, uh, going down there. It just, it didn't really set up very well. We looked at Mayport. Mayport didn't set up well for us at all. Um, so we've, we've kind of been on the, you know, the, the, the great search, you know, for a good location for that cruise terminal, have never found one. Um, the, you know, another question I do get is, couldn't we bring in smaller ships from more, um, higher-end cruise lines to service that cruise drone? Because there are a lot of high-end cruise lines that are, they're smaller. And, um, the, the, I believe that Jacksonville's demographic sets up, um, has set up best historically as kind of a mass market, um, cru- you know, cruise line. It's a, you can get on that Carnival cruise ship for a few hundred dollars, you know? Um, and cruise lines want to be able to fill a ship week in and week out. So if you have a cruise line that comes in and says, we're gonna offer this really elegant cruise, it's a beautiful cruise, um, it's a high-end cruise, so it's an expensive cruise. Could, can they fill that ship week in, week out, month in, month out, year in, year out? That's the question in my mind about a real high-end cruise, whereas you know you can do it for a mass market, um, for a mar- mass-market cruise. Um, but I, I think, again, the, the world changes, the demographics change, Jacksonville's growing, Northeast Florida's growing, the South's growing. It won't shock me to see another line at some point, you know, coming to Jacksonville.
Um, okay, well, this one is interesting, and I actually have this question myself. Um, is the North Florida shipyards, are they a competitor of yours? Do y'all work together? Is it one big happy family? Like, I, explain the difference between the different shipyards.
Sure, yeah, yeah, one big happy family. Um, so, um, they do something completely different than we do. So North Florida Shipyards, and you might know BAE Systems, you know, which used to be Atlantic Marine. So those are shipyards. So they, they build and they repair vessels, which, uh, which is great. We love having them in the harbor because they're service providers for us. So we say that we have this very mature ecosystem. We, we've identified about 800 companies in the maritime, uh, uh, in transportation, uh, industry in Northeast Florida that do business in and around our port, uh, all with offices in Northeast Florida. And, um, this is everything from, um, uh, freight forwards, customs brokers, uh, environmental firms, law firms, um, warehousing, distribution centers, uh, repair and maintenance, um, and companies like BAE and, and North Florida Shipyards that build and repair vessels. So, um, we, we are, our infrastructure is, we have property that we lease out so companies can come and bring their ships, load and unload, and then, and then leave again. Um, the shipyards, they build and repair ships. So, uh, we complement each other, uh, but we don't compete.
Okay, that makes sense. Like, you know, it's that, it's beautiful. Like, when you drive over the bridge, and you can see them, but I guess understanding what every little compartment is, it's
Yeah.
And sometimes they're full, sometimes they're not, and you don't really know.
And, and I, and I'll just mention that the harbor is kind of a complex creature, um, business-wise, because we at the Port Authority, we own five facilities in the harbor. We own, that the Blount Island, Dames Point Marine Terminals, and we own a rail yard that separates those two. And we own the cruise terminal, and then closer downtown, we own the Talleyrand Marine Terminal. But elsewhere along the river, there's a whole network of other facilities. Uh, you met, you, you mentioned North Florida Shipyards, I mentioned BAE, the Mayport Naval Station. Um, there are some private petroleum terminals there. So it's a network of military, privately-owned facilities and publicly-owned facilities of the Port Authority. Um, we are not a regulatory agency. We do not own or control or, or manage, uh, any of that other ma- material. We are neighbors, and we wave to them as we come to work every morning. Um, and, um, but it's a, it, I mentioned the word ecosystem, I use that a lot. It's, it's kind of a business ecosystem. It's very complex and, and, um, integrated into, into the community of Jacksonville.
That's awesome. That's, that's cool. Okay, well, I think that's all the questions that we have right now. Okay, well, I think that's all the questions that we have right now, but like I said, sometimes people later in the day are like, oh, light bulb, so I might be emailing you a question.
Please do. Any more questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, and to that, we really appreciate you allowing us to record this one. You know, sometimes people can't make the meeting, so being able to get the information out there is also really important to us. Since I don't have any other questions, I'm going to turn it back over to Gracie, so Gracie can kind of move us on down the line. Thanks, Robert.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Lauren. Thank you, Robert, for that presentation, really appreciate it. Fascinating to know just how impactful our port is for our local economy and also some of the exciting stuff that will be coming down the line because of the deepening. So thank you for being a part of our morning. We are close to nearing the end of our meeting, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on if you need a second cup of coffee. We, as I mentioned, we have a couple of evening virtual events coming up, and then our next in-person breakfast meeting, breakfast, virtual morning meeting will be September 18th, that's the third Friday of the month. But we actually have Jake Gordon with the Downtown Vision Organization, he's the CEO. He will be doing a specific glance at the State of the Downtown Report that was recently published just specifically for the Downtown Council. Of course, guests are welcome as well, but that is actually next Tuesday from 5:30 to 6:30. And so Jake will be joining us to share more about the positive momentum that's happening downtown, where the opportunities are. It is a 2019 to 2020 report, so it doesn't necessarily include everything that's happened with COVID disruptions, but it still will be a great opportunity for us to learn more about what's going on. So again, that's Tuesday evening, so just in a few days. As I mentioned, our Friday, September 4th meeting is canceled due to Labor Day holiday. And then we are also doing a Zoom virtual education forum on Thursday, September 10th. Panelists to come, but so far, we have the DCPS Superintendent, Dr. Diana Green, as well as School Board Member, Dara Willie, confirmed to share with us how the school system is doing, what, you know, what, basically, how everything's going, and if there's going to be any changes coming our way due to what's happening, you know, with a local health emergency. So save the date for all of those. Our website is downtowncouncil.org to learn more about our organization, but we look forward to seeing you at future events and hope you have a wonderful weekend. So thank you so much.